Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting a new year, the first order of business is reorganizing the board, and so I need a motion to nominate a chair.
I nominate Don Larson.
I'll second.
Second.
Oh, motion by Falken, second by Miller.
Geez Stephanie, I'm not used to you.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falken?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson? Motion carries. It's all yours. Don?
Turn my mic on. At this time, board members, the chair would open the floor to nominations for the office of vice chair for the year 2014.
So Chair, I would nominate Tom Wyeth for vice chair.
Tom Wyeth, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Krogman? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? The chair would entertain a motion to cast the unanimous ballot for Tom Wyeth as vice chair.
Who moved?
Moved by Krogman.
Second.
Second by Falken. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose the same, motion's carried. You gotta do roll call? Okay. We'll do it the long way.
Sorry. Wyeth?
Aye.
Falken?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Are you moving now?
Yep.
No, we can save time. I'll just sit here today and I'll move over next time.
Okay.
Okay, um, next item is item number five on our agenda. Item number five is invitation for a citizen to schedule any time on, with the commission for an item that's not listed. Did we have anyone in the audience that would choose to do so? If not, do any of our department heads have anything that should be brought forth that's not? Okay. This time, commissioners, we've all looked at the agenda, and we do have our consent agenda items. Is there anything that any commissioner or staff member would like to add from the agenda or to the agenda at this time? If not, we'll move on to the consent item, agenda number seven, and I think we've all looked at our packets, and so without objection, we'll approve the consent agenda. I, did you have?
We do have an action item in the, we do have an action item in the consent agenda we might need to pull.
I think Commissioner Miller is referring to underneath item 7C. I did list action to approve a cap on rental payments for human services, and that's optional for you guys have had discussions over the last couple meetings about wanting to put a cap on. If you want to take action on a cap, then you could pull that or take action on that first.
Okay, um, before we approve the consent agenda, is that your wishes, Commissioner Miller, to pull that from the consent agenda and act on it as an action item?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any objection from the rest of the board? Then we would be taking item number 7C and at, at, can we do that? Would it be, would it be, um, permission, permission from the board to do it if we put it right below B under item number eight, routine business, the department head reports, and then our department head would be here, and we could address it at that time?
Fine.
Okay, let's call it eight B dash one, and that will be the action on rental cap or discussion and action. Okay. With that change, are there any other changes to the consent agenda? If not, without objection, we'll move forward to item number eight, which is our routine business, and that is approval of the claims. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion for such.
So moved.
Second by Miller, second by Wyeth. Okay, Secretary, please call the roll. Is there discussion? Does anybody have any questions on them? I'm sorry, we, everybody's good about reading their packets, and we kinda, I only had one, one definition, and I talked to Marty about that, and I found out it was the machine I thought it was, but I didn't, couldn't remember what they called it.
I would just note that we are paying claims out of both the 2013 and the 2014 budget. You'll see that this week as well as the next meeting in January.
Yes, I should have made that clear. There are some 13 and also 14 claims. Any other discussion on the claims? Ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Falken?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we'll move on to item number B under our routine business, as the department head reports, and I think just for the sake of time, Mike, can I call on you first? Because yours is the one that's gonna have a bit of action, and there might be some questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Couple different things that are taking place, I guess, as far as with my report. First of all, the Affordable Care Act has went into effect. I did personally take one of our citizens who, uh, part of the law is that they have to be over, they have to make more than the poverty rate, which is around eleven seven hundred a year, eleven thousand seven hundred. Happened to have an individual whose only income was social security, and it was nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month, which puts him right at, right at that amount. Went in on the Affordable Care Act, looked at the different programs or different plans that there were available to him, and it came out that there was one there that was three hundred and fifty dollar deductible plus a seven hundred dollar cap. That particular plan cost him, I believe, was nineteen dollars and forty-three cents a month. This individual, last year, ended up falling back on the county for a little over twenty-five thousand because of his health problems. So I'm looking forward to this year not, that not being an issue. Of course, with the catastrophic, it'll cost us about twenty-one thousand five hundred, but I'm looking for fairly large savings on that, letting all of the people that, individuals that do have claims with us, that would fall underneath that, letting them know that if they do not pick up the Affordable Care Act, that, that would be a basis for us to be able to deny them because affordable insurance is now available to them. In this particular case, his premiums would have normally been right around three hundred dollars a month, but at twenty dollars a month, it fits into the schedule, and he can afford that portion of it. I guess the other thing that's coming up is going to probably be dealing with Governor Dugard has, uh, has a new proclamation that will be coming out on the fourteenth. I was asked to come there and, and take part in, while he was signing it. He's dealing with veterans, and it's a program that Secretary Zimmerman has been very active with and has been calling us on behalf. All the members of legislature that are veterans or have military ties will be partaking in that signing of the proclamation also, and that'll be on the fourteenth right after his state of state address. In that also, they're going to be having, I don't think it's too early to put it out there, but we're doing the signups, that they're gonna want every county veteran service officer at some point to attend session so they can talk with their elected officials there and let them know that we are part of that group. And I'm, I'm looking, right now, I'm looking at probably doing the, doing the signing thing and, and maybe being there the next day also, but I haven't fully cleared that up.
Does that conclude your fundamental report?
concludes my report, I believe, yes.
Okay. Mike, as you're all aware, we've, we've wanted to visit with you a little bit about the, the rental issue that we run into or that you run into from time to time, and you've brought it up to me, and, um, I think you're, what you're looking for is some guidance from the board, is, or some support from the board, is kind of maintaining, we can pay so much a month, over and above that, maybe you're in a situation, living where maybe you shouldn't be from a income expense standpoint. You wanna refresh the board a little bit?
Oh, yeah, I did bring that up. I guess that was mostly with, with you, Commissioner Larson. And what it is, at that particular time, we had an individual that came forward, and their rent was in excess of a thousand dollars. And when we're looking at someone who is, is making minimum wage or just above minimum wage, that really is excessive rents. They cannot afford that. That's more than, you know, that, that comes out to, well, in that case, more than half of their income goes for rent, and that just doesn't seem a good idea when there are other places that you can rent in, in town that are quite a bit less. Most of your apartments, you know, they're, they're gonna run a little bit more, a lot of them are six, seven hundred, eight hundred dollars. But when I first was talking with you about that, I was thinking that six fifty would be enough for most of them that are falling in, especially if they're gonna be in that lower income range, and, and that's why I was using that number. Now, there's going to be certain exceptions. If someone has a larger family, part of what we do look at is, is the federal poverty guidelines, and, you know, the more people in the family, of course, the higher amount, and that's probably the reason I hadn't been really bringing it forward to, to necessarily put a solid cap on the maximum amount, but, but more that if you have a single individual or two or possibly three people, that they can get affordable housing, that's, that's gonna be under the six fifty a month, in my opinion.
Well, just to extend a little further, you know, we pick up gas bills, correct? Gas, electricity, utility bills?
We, we can go forward on, on, on the utility bills. Informally, in our office, we have certain things when we're looking at someone is, is, in, in the laws, okay? Whenever we go to approve or, you know, suggest that you approve something, what we look at is, this is a one-time issue. There has to be a reason that you got behind on these bills, okay? There also has to be that this is not gonna be, we pay you the rent this month, next month, you're on the street, okay? They have to be able to afford the ongoing part of it. Some people, you know, some individuals, they, they get into, into jobs that don't have sick leave, or they don't have, you know, any time that they can take off, so if they end up with pneumonia for a week, they miss a week of work, you know, they're down three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars in income for that month. That would be a case we would be looking at in this particular case. Now, also with utility bills, if they miss like two months, we can look at the rent and the utilities. That is pretty seldom that we would ever cover two of those in one month, especially we have outside sources like my neighbor and stuff that, that we also tap into. But every once in a while, you get that bad situation where they, they might need help from us and also from my neighbor.
Okay, I was just checking because if it was a regular basis, and somebody's paying three hundred dollars rent, that's a heck of a steal, right? But if they're paying a thousand dollars for gas because they live in some breezeway pre-manufactured home, the net cost is what I'm after.
Okay.
To us and to them, and it seemed like, I just thought if utilities were regularly being paid on some of these people, what made me think about was the recent weather, and I just think that if you could have them live in a little better place, the total cost would be less, but, but if we're just picking it up once in a while, it doesn't do anything for the us.
Yeah, it, well-
Other than giving them good advice to look at the total picture, not just that three hundred dollars.
And, and we've been fairly lucky, along with the fact that a lot of those individuals do get low-income energy assistance. That has been drawn back quite a bit as far as eligibility criteria, but, um, you know, a lot of the individuals that, that we serve out of our office are on those particular programs, so we're not so worried about that. We'll probably see more of that around May, when they've extinguished all of their low-income energy assistance programs. That's kinda when our, you know, I guess if you wanted to look at it's having cycles, we're starting the rent season now, and come around May, we'll start doing the utility season, and, uh, I guess, yeah, we don't have four seasons there. We mostly have two, and they kinda interact.
Mike, I guess the question I have is the, when people come in to you, are, they're behind already?
Yes, they have to be.
So, 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 for example, if, if someone's living in a place that they can't afford, and we, we are basically helping them catch up, and then they end up moving out anyway, all we're doing is getting their rent paid up so they don't have anything against them at the next place, so it's really not helping them into the future? I mean, how many of, how many of these do you think is catch up and, okay, now I'm gonna move and find someplace else, or are they trying to, are you trying to work with them as far as getting something different, or, I guess, if all we're doing is catching the landlords up, and we're not, the person really, I guess it's helping the person, but it's not securing a place for them, correct?
We usually don't do that. That, what you're talking about is something that, we've had two, I guess in the last three and a half, almost four years, we've had probably three situations similar to what you're talking about, but that's one of the criteria. I mean, if, when you come in and you apply for that, one of the first questions is, how are you paying next month's rent? Okay? So, yes, we're catching them up this month, but if they don't have an answer for next month, I cannot in a clear conscience suggest that this be covered by the government.
So they're not being, you know, landlord gets caught up, and then they're evicting them because they didn't pay their rent. It's, it's, you never let them get into a situation where they're, they're just catching up, then, okay?
They, they usually do get a notice that, that they'll be evicted if they don't catch up on their rent, but we talk with the landlord, and the understanding on the form that, that the landlord signs is that they will not be evicted in the next month.
Okay, that, that was my concern, that we weren't making it worse for them. We were just helping them get caught up in their bills, but we weren't making it worse because now they don't have a place to live. Thank you.
And whenever, whenever they come in, that's, you know, that's the main thing. What are you going to do for next month? In some cases, I've had one of them that says, I'm getting a roommate, they're already being lined up to move in, but I need to get things up to date now, and, and it like, we do place the lien against them, and I have to apologize, I did not bring up the forms of Irene had just given me the numbers of what her collections are, but a lot of that is rents and utilities that she's collected.
Are you successful on recouping that?
We definitely, uh, we, we're not ahead, I can tell you that. And, and I'm trying to think of the number, I, and I, unfortunately, I just left it sitting on the edge of my desk when I came up.
That's okay. I just wondered if, if it was pretty difficult to get that money back?
It's not the easiest thing, and, and certain people do take it upon themselves to make sure that we're paid back. One of them that, that's be coming up in our next session is one that, basically, we're doing the thing where they, their payday's Friday, but they're shutting off the gas on, on Wednesday, and so in cases like that, a lot of times, we don't even have to necessarily go through the board for it. We just say, we'll have this net in place in case it doesn't fall through, but, uh, quite a few times, we're just like making sure that they keep one until they do pay it.
My second question then is, are you comfortable with a six hundred and fifty dollar cap? Of course, having to use your discretion when there are more family members.
I'm very happy with that, yes. I, that was one of the things that, you know, I'm thinking if you, if you have a family of, of nine, and their income, say, is, is three thousand a month, which, you know, from, you know, like you say, from the Affordable Care Act, we know that is under the, you know, it, it's like two hundred percent of the poverty level, but if something happens that they are not able to, to make that rent, of course, we're gonna ask them and see if they can pay partial on it, but I, I would do like the idea of having the flexibility that if something unusual comes like that, that I can address, um, the member of the board, that would be my liaison, and, and take it to them and, and kinda try to argue my case with them.
So if we do take action on this, we need to build that into our motion, then?
I would, I would think that would be a, a good idea, but again, with the understanding, you know, that, you know, as, as it sits now, they have to be able to prove that next month they can pay their full bill without any assistance from anyone.
Fellow commissioners, I think that's why we're having this discussion, is Mike had one of those unusual circumstances where, um, it was, it appeared somebody was driving a Cadillac when they should be driving a Ford or a Chevy, as far as their housing allotment. And so it became excessive, and he just wanted some guidance that says, hey, I will, we will pay this much towards rent, and anything over and above that, you're gonna have to take care of yourself.
What's the rate for Brookings Housing, the section eight? Cause don't they have a, a limit on their two-bedroom and three-bedroom?
They, they do have limits on their two, two, three and-
And is that based on a, a study of the average in the area, or what is that based off of?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I've seen, you know, some of that, you know, like a one-bedroom, one-bedroom apartment in Brookings, I believe, based on, on the Brookings housing, if I'm going from memory, including utilities is someplace in the area, I believe, of, uh, like three eighty.
Okay.
Now, if you can find a place in Brookings, a one-bedroom apartment in Brookings that includes utilities at three eighty, it's probably not the nicest place.
So you're saying the six fifty would allow you, um, in a place that is reasonable? If you were to lower that number to say five hundred or something like that, then it'd be difficult for somebody to, to find a place like that, and that is-
Right, right now, the, probably the, the cheapest housing right now is probably trailer homes, and, um, there are some in certain, you know, trailer parks here in town that, that you could actually get for under three hundred a month. I don't, you know, I, I don't think we'll get our spouses to move there, but, and then six fifty is a pretty common, seven fifty for, you know, an older trailer home, six fifty for a nicer one in for the apartments. That's two bedrooms.
I, I guess just my question, you know, we're looking at taking action. You have policies in your department that's how you handle, just like you do in looking at the next month's rent. Would it be better if, if we just concurred at this time that that was the figure, rather than to have it as an action item or a motion, because then it kinda ties it, and then if you wanna change it, there's, is it better to have it just as part of a, his policy? That, cause this-
The reason, um, my understanding, the reason why this discussion has come up again is the board asked me whether the board, the board has ever taken formal action on putting a cap because you saw something on a welfare report that was above what you thought the limit should be. When we went back and reviewed through the minutes, there was nothing ever either noted in the minutes or action in the minutes setting a cap, so that's why the discussion's happening.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if it could be a be it noted, then, that they're gonna have it as part of their policy, because then future commissions, it's just part of your policy, and if you need to raise it, you can come to us if you feel it needs to be more. I, I don't, whatever, it doesn't-
I think it's good to have it in the minutes and a, and a cap, and they're, they're, just for that exact reason, future, you know, leadership, future position holders and that kinda stuff will have them something to at least go off of, um, and stuff, so.
Commissioner Wyeth?
Well, we've gone on pretty long, and this is kind of off the, but you brought something up, Brian. The, the South Dakota housing, which I'm not that familiar with, but just to kinda clear the air, get straight information, but I understand if you ask to be put on the list, you can be on that waiting list for a long time.
The, the waiting list, the, the section eight housing that, that has done, Ram Enterprises is the ones that do it for us out of Aberdeen. Uh, there's a lady by the name of Nyla Smith who is located here in Brookings that takes care of the section eight housing. And, uh, yeah, she can go on the list. It had been, um, that particular list had been locked with the, probably since about October or so. The role, the rules changed with the sequester and everything, that we basically wouldn't have had anyone on. Uh, the funding is at a percentage of, and that varies each year, of the amount of rentals that are out there. And, uh, there's sometimes a waiting list of over a year. We're, we're fairly lucky here at Brookings. Our, our waiting list isn't as long, but then again, last time I checked, there were only two single-bedroom section eight apartments in the entire city of Brookings that would accept section eight housing because the rates are so low. There's a couple mutual self-help units there that the rents are, are lower, that include our utilities, but they are, uh, single-room studios, and they, they are actually done a little differently. And of course, uh, there is also like the, the HUD houses that, you know, apartments, there's one just across over here, and they fall in a little different area, and I really don't know anything about how those operate, except for they do have a minimum amount that's charged.
Well, fellow commissioners, I think the chair will take the liberty of a comment and a question. I think I commend our, our department head for bringing this to us because they use their discretion, and I think that he and his predecessor as well have used the discretion very well and, and have done a good job of screening all applicants to make sure they qualify. Just looking for some, some consensus from this board that anything over and above this maybe we, is an unusual circumstance in that we, um, he would bring that to us, but anything up to a, a given amount of money, given his discretion, that that's, would be appropriate. My only question would be to counsel, um, in regards to this being a part of our welfare program, do you see any, um, legal limitations or concerns about us establishing a maximum assistance level?
I haven't visited with Mike about this prior to today, so I guess I would have to say I would probably feel most comfortable having an opportunity to look into it if it was something you were going to set as a, in terms of a formal resolution or a formal cap from the commission as opposed to an inter-office policy, something like that. Would certainly, I'd be more comfortable with from a legal standpoint, but if we were going to take some action, I would need an opportunity to review just to confirm that we wouldn't have any issue with that.
So then my, my other follow-up question would be, Madam Counsel, is if we were just to, uh, take any kind of action, as Mr. Commissioner Krogman has suggested, that we have something as a matter of record, that it be, um, use his, anything over six hundred and fifty dollars, the director would bring it to the board to discuss it prior to approval or something like that?
That would-
A threshold, a circumstance over a specific threshold?
Yeah, that, that would probably be okay.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board members?
So is it my understanding that, that our counsel will look into this, and then it will become an action item at another meeting, or are we not going to put this in a formal motion?
If, if I'm understanding counsel correctly, you're saying it's appropriate for us today to, to set a maximum level of rent reimbursement at six hundred and fifty dollars, and any, any claims over and above that amount would be acted by the, would be brought to this board by the director, and they would be acted on accordingly? Something similar to that?
I think if you phrase it along those lines, we'd probably be okay to take action today.
Yeah.
But one, one thing, no clarification on that, though. Mike had talked about maybe running it by the board liaison rather than the whole board on that type of thing, but then maybe report back to make it smoother, or are you thinking, you know, let the whole board know on a meeting? I just didn't know if time is of the essence at times where you get a request for, you know, multiple-bedroom apartment for a thousand dollars, and you would say, hey, I got this request, talk to the liaison, I think this is a special circumstance. They put everything here, I'm gonna go ahead and do this, just let everybody know, and then report on it to the board? Or same way, one person has a one-bedroom for a thousand dollars a rent, and you just say, I'm not gonna do this one, I'm gonna tell them no on this one, and, and that way, it's a little, a little time, you know, would, would be saved, and we're giving you the discretion along with just kinda reporting back to the liaison, I guess. Is that adequate, or does everybody want everything?
I would, what would work the best for you?
It, it's fairly rare, you know, that the, these things would come up, that we'd have requests for more than amount, so I, um, you know, as you're aware, as being my liaison, I have no problems calling you.
Right.
I just don't know how much the other board members, I mean, cause I can call all of you, we, we do have a phone, and so, you know- We do have a phone, and so, you know, that would not be an issue for me to call each of you, or if you would rather I just call my liaison. I guess that's, I'm willing to do whichever you would prefer.
You know, I'm gonna rely on your, you deal with it on a daily basis, you know, I don't. You know, I don't know what a special circumstance would be. And so I guess I would rely, feel more comfortable relying on your idea of what you see on a daily basis and what you see as a special circumstance. And just basically, the communication is what I would like to see into the liaison. It's fine with me, I guess that's my opinion, I hope everybody else will weigh in.
If I could say, the only exception I would ask is, and I probably will be at least contacting at least three of the board members, is if I would have someone that comes in that would ask for, say, $1,000. And I say, there's just, there's just no way in clear conscience that I could put that forward. And if they were to push the issue, I would probably call three board members just to get the majority of the board does not feel as if this is gonna be appropriate, and they would deny it, or, you know, would not approve the request at the next meeting. That would be the only exception that I would say.
Okay, then, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we set a cap of $650 for rents with the understanding that our department head uses his discretion together with his contact to our liaison to do anything over and above that amount.
You've heard the motion?
No, second.
Second by Krogman, discussion? Stephanie?
I would just caution to, that in that situation where you're above where you're comfortable at, that should probably come to a meeting instead of getting consensus from three board members outside of an open meeting.
I think Bob would work with his liaison, and the request would come before the board and we'd discuss it. Yeah, I think, you know, the bottom line is Bob just wants a little, or Bob, Mike... Well, same hairdo, that's what I'm getting mixed. But what Mike is looking for is just a, just a little communication with us as a board as to, you know, once in a while, I see one of these that, wow, that's a terrific amount of rent for this individual, and, you know, their money management is, and we're not to, shouldn't be here to, we're here to help, but not to make up that difference.
Well, exactly. And I think that, you know, just the communication part, if you're gonna find out that there's gonna be an issue, that you might get some backlash because of a decision you made, certainly bring it all up to us and let us know and say, hey, I denied a claim there. If you get clawed, I just, this is the reason I didn't do it. And that communication is fine, too. I don't need to think.
And Mike, you can communicate with us, you know, in your reports where it says, claim approved or denied. You can say, approved for these reasons, and you can put it in there, and then we all see it in our packet, I mean.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Weiseth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks, Mike, didn't mean to run you through the wringer. Mr. Hill, as long as we're taking the, keep the hairdos the same, maybe I can call you Mike.
You can call me anything, as long as you feed me and pay me.
Morning, Bob.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The county development department, we have a zoning meeting tonight, starts at 7:00 PM. The main topic is a conditional use permit request for a cemetery out in the country. We also plan to pass out the county's road agreement if the board so approves it today. The Commissioner Weiseth will address the planning commission with the results of that, if it's approved. Our building inspector request for proposal closed yesterday at 4:00 PM. We are reviewing them at this time, and hopefully we'll be able to bring a request for the new building inspector at the next county commission meeting. Nuisance issues are still ongoing. The department's been, we've been working with the deputy state's attorney. Obviously, you realize the ground's a little frozen hard now, so the action's slowing down. Hopefully, there'll be more progress in the spring. Got a communications drill through the Office of Emergency Management on Wednesday, EOC training, which I got a request in on Wednesday, or in Huron, in two weeks. And that's where there's a pilot program going on. And if Kingsbury County gets hit by a category five tornado, they may call me in to go help Kingsbury County. And the same thing, if Brookings County gets hit, they would pull Kingsbury into here. And they want to make sure we all know how to operate on the same EOC, Emergency Operations Center frame of mind. There is a PPCC, that's a pandemic, planning committee, meeting on Thursday, January 9th. And a thing that did pop up Friday, so you don't have your travel request in, but I will submit one, it would be considered late. Monday and Tuesday of next week, there's an EM 101 training. And that's, that's training that I've been trying to get to for the last year, almost one year since I started this job. And they're getting, they're getting anxious that I take this particular course. So if the board has no objections, I would like to request to go out there and I'll submit the travel request, the course, but I'll need to take a county vehicle to go. No, it's in Pierce. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. And I've been invited to attend a breakfast over the next, looks like, three weeks to meet with the four candidates for the new office of Assistant Vice President for Safety and Security at South Dakota State University. They want to, they want some of the local government officials and law enforcement-type people to meet with the candidates before they make their final decision. And that's all I have, unless you have questions?
Questions for Bob? I should have said questions for Mike. Thanks, Bob. Marty, you're the next one on the list.
I really don't have anything, but I just don't want Bob to feel special. I've been invited to that up at SDSU, too.
Oh, good. Mr. Burke, our highway superintendent, would you like to come forward with something good for the order?
I don't either. All I really have is a cold, and I just soon, if you have any questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I don't have anything.
Well, comes to colds, if you want another one, I got one I'll give you. Anything else, any other departments, anything any department heads may have missed? We'll move on to the finance office report. Stacy?
Nothing specific today, Vicki's not here today. The tax notices, you probably received yours in the mail, they did get sent out. Otherwise, that's probably fielding some questions on that, but that's the main thing, I guess, going on in the office right now.
You also have that motion you requested on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, I had to flip my page over on the agenda. There is, if you turn to the next page on your agenda, you can see I've put a request for you folks to take action on not allowing campaigning to take place basically in this building during the six weeks during absentee voting coming up. There's potential legislation going to, going through the legislature this next session. However, if anything is passed, it wouldn't go into effect until July 1. And with the primary being June 4th, we're gonna be having absentee voting going on in April and May here in this building. And I don't think we've ever really taken official, there's nothing in statute that says that this is technically a polling location during absentee voting time. There are statutes that speak to campaigning at polling locations on Election Day, that 100-foot buffer, but nothing that speaks to the location having absentee voting. So that's, I guess, my request from you folks to just allow a 100-foot buffer around this building for campaigning during that time that absentee voting is going on. That keeps people from being out in the hallways, wearing campaign stickers and T-shirts and influencing people as they're possibly standing in line waiting to vote.
That would, let me ask you this question, because you're our elections expert here. That would be somewhat in concert, then, with the polling places that we have during a regular election?
Right, on Election Day, statute says that you cannot have any campaigning within 100 feet of any entrance to a polling location. So it would be kind of mirroring that statute, but just a motion by the board. I think there are, I know our auditors group has, is putting that law through, you know, posing that to the legislature this session to get that through as just kind of an updated change. But in the meantime, several counties I know are, auditors are asking their boards to approve a motion similar to this. Of course, they speak to their courthouses more than, we're not at the courthouse, so I'm not so concerned about that, so it's more for our specific.
Yes, Commissioner Miller?
I would, unless there are more questions, I'm ready to make the motion.
Did any other commissioners have any?
Well, we can discuss that in a second. The only thing, this, the way it reads, and I have no problem with it, it's from the building, not from any particular doors, right? It's 100 feet from this actual building.
Yeah, from the building.
First of all, we have a motion, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Weiseth.
Yep.
Now we're gonna have a discussion.
I'm typing into...
That's just to clarify, I mean, you said inside the building, but it's actually around the whole building.
Right, from, yeah, I mean, the 100 feet from the entrances, so from basically around the building, so.
So we're gonna do it as it's written on our agenda, the motion will be. And so then, also, we're limiting that just to the early absentee voting.
Right, it would be the six weeks during absentee voting.
Correct.
Yeah, so it starts middle of April.
I guess the only, I guess the only concern I have with you, with 100 feet of the building, I mean, you could technically have someone parked out front that went into the library that had a sign on their vehicle that weren't, that didn't know, and get yourself in a position, and could we put it on the property? So they couldn't be in the parking lot or something like that? Because if they're in a parking lot, they're probably in here. Or if they're parked out in front, they're probably in here. What I'm getting at is, you know, when you start talking about 100 feet, it gets pretty, how do you enforce that if someone decides to park across the street, which is going to be within 100 feet of that door over here?
It will. And another part...
From the side door to the library, yeah.
Whatever.
The street's like 33.
Excuse me, let me, I'm gonna enter in, and counsel is trying to get my attention here. And I had the same question for counsel, if we could do this by motion or ordinance, so.
Well, in terms of the 100 feet, that's already set by statute for Election Day, so I think you're fine sticking with the 100 feet parameter. They, violations of the, I mean, there are already state law in place in terms of Election Day, and a violation of that's a class-two misdemeanor. Obviously, I think Marty can attest that our law enforcement would use their discretion when, you know, whatever the situation may arise, with your concern about where someone's parking and whatnot. There isn't statute directly on point to what Stacy's talking about yet, but there are statutes that refer to absentee voting and what type of campaigning is prohibited where the absentee ballots are provided or where, who they're provided by. So I think we are headed in the right direction, and I think there probably will be legislation that catches up to this anyway. You're probably fine to do it by resolution today, but I guess it just depends on how you want to enforce it. Because what we'd be doing today wouldn't be something that'd be necessarily enforceable by law enforcement if it was a resolution. But if you want to go down the route of an ordinance, we might have a little more discretion enforcement-wise. If that makes sense?
For point of clarification, and then I'll get back to Ryan. We have three different choices here. We've got, we could have a motion, an action taken by this board, or we could do that action via resolution or ordinance. Those are probably the three options. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's correct. I guess I would defer to Stacy in terms of how, what kind of enforcement is needed or what the end goal would be. Are we looking to have something where law enforcement is able to step in if something happens?
You know, in the past, we've had some issues with this. What, you know, what I basically want is to say that, you know, our board does not allow people to campaign near the building during that absentee voting time. Do I want to charge them with a class-two misdemeanor? No. I mean, it's basically to keep those people out that are wearing, you know, the potential of standing in our hallway with T-shirts and posters and things. I mean, if we have something, pretty simply to go ask them to leave, and this is why I can ask you to leave.
Run, I need to, I wanna hear Ryan.
Not an issue.
My concern is the private properties to the south. Yeah, it is on. You know, now, if you have somebody that rents that property and they want to put a sign in their front yard, and now they can't campaign within 100 feet of it, now are we stepping on the rights of an owner to have a sign in their yard for their, or a tenant to have a sign in their yard?
We could put from, like, from 100 feet from the public entrances, because that south entrance is not a public entrance to the building. It's locked during the day, it's specifically used by employees. That would eliminate that south property.
That would be great. I guess that, you know, your kind of concern is having people in the building.
Right.
And so if we were able to keep, you know, it off the property, you know, we'd be able to do the same thing, which would allow somebody that's on their own property to be able to still have a sign up if they wanted to. But, you know, then again, does that, I don't know if that's gonna be conflicting to state statute down the road, too, I guess.
Question, how does state law work on Election Day when, let's say, First Lutheran Church, and there's a house right next door, and when they use the front entryway, or probably some of the other polling locations I'm not familiar with, and there's private property right next to this public building? How do they enforce that 100-foot rule then? Do they?
The workers, if there is something within 100 feet of the entrance of the polling location, it is removed.
Even on private property?
Yes. Yeah, and if there is campaigning going on, and we, you know, and usually, it is someone from the public letting the workers inside know that someone's outside, because they're not out there monitoring it, they can't be. And if there is something that can't be handled, if the workers, it's sometimes just as simple that my superintendent goes out and says, you know, the law says 100 feet away, stay outside that 100-foot buffer and you're fine. I don't know if I've ever, have I ever contacted Marty on an election day to go handle something that couldn't, I couldn't handle, or that my workers couldn't handle?
Well, I think we can move forward.
And it's one election, and then we'll see what statute brings to.
I think we can move forward on this, because it's just, just the idea that you and your workers can go out and say to somebody within 100 feet, if it's across the street, you can't, you know, please move your vehicle, it's not a big deal, it's not a big law enforcement thing where we're gonna arrest anybody, it's just the idea that you can be consistent with other voting places, and I think we just need to move forward with it.
I mean, if somebody is coming in, they're parked across the street to the north, and they're coming in to buy their license tags, you know, and they're there for 10 minutes, it's one thing. If they're parking their vehicle with a big, huge banner on the side for that entire six weeks, I'd act them to ask them to move.
I think we're overthinking this, I think we just need to...
I mean, it's just...
Okay, any further discussion?
Do you want to make, do you want to make that change to the public entrances, though? So we protect this south property?
I'll amend my motion to say the public entrances.
Is that, is that friendly, is that friendly amendment?
Yes, I will change my second to the new motion.
Okay.
Concur.
Okay, any further discussion? Assume you're ready to vote, please call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Weiseth?
Aye.
Falcon? Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order, Stacy, from finance?
No, I'm good now.
You're good now, okay. We got about 10 minutes, we're a little bit early, but, and we did put a time on there. I suppose if someone from the public did want to come in and hear our friends from Banner's presentation, we'd better do it at 10 o'clock. I think we've, item number 10A, we have pretty well accomplished, have we not? I mean, is that, is that gonna take more than a couple seconds? And so with, with the permission of the board, the chair would suggest that we move down to number 10, regular business and action, or number A, which is to approve the road use agreement with, between the county and Navida. Is that, does everybody concur with me? Is that, does everybody concur with me? You're not gonna ask a bunch of questions, Tom, you've got them all answered?
I'm ready to make a motion, so don't you quit asking along, it's good to have.
If everyone, if every, if everyone agrees with that, let's, for the moment, let's move on to regular business and item number A, which is the action I just mentioned, is there a motion?
I move to approve agreement number fourteen dash zero one between Brookings County and Navita Aurora LLC.
Okay. Second. Second by Commissioner Falcon. The only discussion that we're gonna have on this is, once again, I wanna thank our commissioners that worked on this and, and the Navita people and our legal staff, put hours and hours and hours of work putting this thing together to try and do it right, and it was, it was a great show of cooperation and, and collaboration, so. Any further discussion?
I guess, and I just wanna thank the Planning and Zoning Board, who really took this as a serious matter when it came out and, and worked with us on redoing this and making the road agreement and the planning, conditional use permit, finding some facts and working this all together, so it was really an effort on everybody's part. Thank you.
Okay. Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don, can I make one more comment on that? And I, I know the night the Planning and Zoning Board sat up here and had the, that, there were some township people that were here at that meeting. And there, the, one of the board members, I don't remember which one, Bob, said something about if the townships feel they're gonna be affected, they should really come to this meeting and ask questions or have any concerns about, not this road agreement for this particular road, but what, what if someone uses a different route or does something different, I encourage them to talk with you, Rick, and, about different things, but I, as I see, there's, there isn't anybody here, so I guess they must feel confident that what we're doing, you know, it's just that they've had an opportunity to come, and this would been the proper time and place, correct, Bob, or? They must have all their issues with their townships worked out.
Okay. Since the board took the liberty to move to action B, action item number B, the, would be the lease agreement for the community health offices, and I think we've all read our documents, and it's just an update. Thank you, Rick, have a good New Year. If it's all right with the board, let's move on, and, and the chair would entertain a motion to approve agreement fourteen oh two, and this is the lease renewal for community health.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Falcon. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
With the consensus of the board, we'll go on to item number D, which is rather easily handled. This is the action to approve the, following the Brookings Register, Volga Tribune, and Elton Records as the legal papers for the county in two thousand fourteen. Chair would entertain a motion. Krogman, thank you.
Second.
Second, Wyeth, discussion? Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
With the same consensus of the board, we would move on to action item E under ten, which is our regular business. This is to designate our official depositories for the county for two thousand fourteen, and they are listed on our agenda. The chair would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Krogman. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't think that, um, item F, if, do commissioners have some questions on that? Has everybody done their research and looked it over? I, I know we've got it in our packets, all right. With the consensus of the board, let's move on to action item number F under ten. This is to prove, approve resolution fourteen oh one, setting the official pay plan for the county for two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon?
Second.
Second by Miller. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Be the consensus of the board, we'll move on to item G, which is the approval of resolution fourteen oh two, resolution setting the meeting pay and per diem rates for two thousand fourteen. Someone so moved?
So moved.
Falcon?
Second.
Krogman? Discussion?
It is similar to what was last year, I guess.
It is the same rates as last year, I just wanna make sure that the board doesn't wanna make any changes to that meeting pay. We did not budget any increases for next year. And also, the resolution that the chair will be signing has the dates corrected to two thousand fourteen, it's not on the right year yet.
Have we, yeah, have we heard any issues of people not wanting to serve because compensation is low?
I haven't heard, so.
Okay. All right.
No, I think we're fine. Call a roll, please.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consensus of the board, we got two minutes yet. Action to approve item number H, which is resolution fourteen oh three, and that is setting the compensation for election officials for the year two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Krogman. Discussion?
This is also the same rates as two thousand thirteen.
Correct. Please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consensus of the board, action number I under regular business number ten is to approve fourteen oh four. This is the one updating the compensation rate for the chairperson and the alternate chairperson for the Brookings County Board of Mental Illness, and we had a very good and thorough explanation of this in our packet. Does any, the chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Falcon, second by Wyeth. Discussion, board members? This keeps us in concert with, with the state. Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action with consensus from the board, moving on to item number J under ten, is action to approve resolution fourteen oh five, appointing an emergency manager. That was pretty well covered in our packet.
So moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Falcon. Discussion? Yes.
Are we doing Mike?
Mike, we're gonna appoint Mike Hill. You know, Marty, if, next week, if you'd bring a ladder and you screw out one of those, that light bulb up there, it wouldn't be so bright when we look over that way.
I just want, I didn't know if we needed to say exactly who we are appointing.
It probably is all right to state Bob Hill. In discussion? Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, I guess we have come upon the hour of ten AM. We got quite a bit done with this. The, and Todd, we're trying to move it along, so I don't know, do you have another appointment today? Okay. At this time, I'm gonna call on Mr. England and Mr. Wermers from Banner and Associates to come up and kinda give an overview of the work that they've done on our Thirty-Fourth Avenue construction project. I wanna thank you guys for the detailed information that was provided in our packet, and I don't know if you're gonna, can flash that up for our viewing audience or not, but anyway, there it comes. But I think you've got some options for us and, and to discuss and think about, and so I'll turn the program over to you right now.
Thank you. I'm Darrell England, Banner Associates, and Brad Wermers, Banner Associates as well. We, previously, we're, our last meeting with the commission was back, I believe, in August twenty thirteen. Brad was at that, I wasn't here, and we distributed a preliminary report at that time that I believe went out in your packets, and included the soil borings and a brief description of the project. And included in that was cost estimates for doing the road reconstruction within the statutory sixty-six foot right-of-way. And then also a cost estimate for doing it within the hundred-foot right-of-way. Since that time, we have done another cost estimate to do the reconstruction within an eighty-foot right-of-way. So we have three alternates, sixty-six-foot right-of-way, an eighty-foot right-of-way, and a hundred-foot right-of-way. The sixty-six-foot right-of-way really gets compressed. The ditches that we would have alongside the roadway would be a V-type ditch as opposed to a flat-bottom ditch. You wouldn't be able to carry as much drainage, and, and it's harder to construct. Taking a V and trying to get a grade to contain the water, it's just difficult to construct. Not that we couldn't do it. If we needed to stay within the statutory right-of-way, we could get it to work. Since that time, we did do an eighty-foot right-of-way, and Stephanie Miller met myself and, and Lyle Bose was out there too, one of the property owners, and, and actually on, south of Thirty-Fourth, a portion of that is, it appears as though that's in an eighty-foot right-of-way. Now, the, the highway that I've typically referred to, that we would want to try to mirror this, would be the, the landfill road to the north of, of the bypass. It's also Thirty-Fourth. That has a hundred-foot right-of-way. So that's where we're at today. We have the cost estimates for all three that were in your packet. And, do you have, are those flashed up? Can we get those up on the?
Oh, whoops.
Sixty-six was up there.
Oh, okay. Is that sixty-six?
This is the sixty-six.
Okay, yeah. So, um, the sixty-six-foot right-of-way, and the difference is primarily is in land cost, the difference, the sixty-six-foot does not include land cost, because it's contained within the, the statutory right-of-way.
There is a little bit of land cost there, though, with the.
Oh, okay.
But at the intersection there, we have a little bit of land cost, but the majority of land cost outside the sixty-six is not with this one here.
That's right. Okay, that total project is two million four ninety-six, if we use the sixty-six-foot right-of-way. Jumping ahead to one that we just completed here within the last month or so, is the eighty-foot right-of-way cost is approximately two million seven hundred fifty-eight thousand. That's total project, including engineering, some contingency dollars in there as well. And then the last one is the hundred-foot right-of-way, which is two million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, total project cost, again, including construction, land costs, and contingencies and engineering. So... Where we're at today, and I'll back up just a little bit, we have applied for a railroad grant, which is really a safety grant. It, it does not include, you know, like the pre-cast plank or whatever kind of plank is gonna be used for the crossing in south, that's included in these dollars up here. The railroad grant that we applied for is a safety grant for the flashing lights and arms and, and those types of things. And that, I, I've talked to DOT, they have received a letter from Stephanie at that time, who was the chair. That will be processed, and in all likelihood, we're gonna get a grant for that, for those dollars. But it won't be for another year. Those dollars won't be out there until the year fifteen, sixteen. However, the reconstruction can go forward, and, and then you, you can come in and put the lights in at a later date, so. That's kind of the way that's gonna.
Just to be clear, the two fifty then, that appears in all three, is, has nothing to do with the safety or the grant? That is actual engineering and construction?
The two fifty includes the lighting and all that.
Oh, it does, okay.
Yeah, I think Darrell kind of bespoke a little bit there with that, but it does include the lighting.
How much is the two fifty lights and how much is construction?
The, the, um, I think the construction is about fifty thousand for the pre-class, pre-cast plank. And then there's going to be a little bit of a match that you're gonna have to have for the lights themselves, and I think it's like a ten percent, and I believe those dollars are in that two hundred thousand range.
Two fifty, well, the two fifty covers, just to kinda clarify that, Darrell, the two fifty covers the crossing and the lights.
Right, right, yeah.
And so how much, that's, I was wondering, if it's fifty thousand for actual construction costs, and it's ten percent of the remaining two hundred thousand, that's twenty, so it's seventy, so we could subtract.
Yeah.
See, we all go, one hundred and eighty thousand from each one of these.
Is that?
I think.
In, in the construction of this, and I guess we, I don't know, 'cause I know that, because of Sixth Street and the major construction, and, and this being maybe a detour, and when they actually start on this, I mean, if this is gonna be reconstructed and the constru, about how long would it take to build this? Two, three, four months, six months?
Oh, yeah, I, I would say, boy, we'd wanna push it five, six months.
Okay.
It's a good stretch, yes.
And the other part is that the, the road would actually be shut down, I would assume. The rail, the railroad would have to keep open, and then that'd be the only thing open on that, so I guess in our timing and looking at the project, the Sixth Street project is slated for sixteen?
Yes.
So we would want this done before that. That's, that's our goal, I think, is to finish, maybe if we get started in fourteen and finish it for sure in fifteen then, so that isn't gonna be a conflict with.
Exactly, you wouldn't want those two construction projects going on, concur.
Well, and we have another issue as well, we need to get it finished in, in fourteen because, for our partners to work with us. That was one of the restrictions that they had in their offer.
Okay.
A question, a question for Bob. You know, this, what kind of, is this down the road for the planning of the county transportation and that kind of stuff? Is this considered a major arterial road, a minor, or is this something where if we were to do a smaller size, like a sixty-six or eighty, that we would then, you know, be kinda building something not to the specifics for the overall planning of the county?
Well, obviously, it, it's in the master transportation plan for the city of Brookings and Brookings County both. As far as whether it's an arterial, I'd have to ask Mr. Burke, the, the actual, do you remember what they call it?
It's a major.
It's a major collector, so.
Well, and I, and I guess to look at these figures, I mean, we certainly don't wanna go down to the sixty-six. I, I totally agree that's, and from, jumping from the sixty-six to the eighty is, is quite a jump, but jump, going from the eighty to the hundred really isn't. By looking, it's, it's only a hundred thousand dollars more. I mean, I, I think in ten years, twenty years down the road, if we build this at eighty, we're gonna say, golly, I wish we'd have done a hundred. I think we need to look at that, is what it's costing us, and see what we can afford, I think we need to look at that, is what it's costing us, and see what we can afford, but I, I would lean toward the hundred if we, if any way possible, that we could do it.
Stephanie, I'll get to you, but Commissioner oversees you. So Commissioner Weisseth, you had a comment?
Well, just, no, I'm still in the question phase.
Okay.
Is that, how are we doing on the relocation with whoever, Sioux Valley? You have Brookings Utilities or Sioux Valley? Which side do we have to move on the eighty-foot plan and the hundred-foot plan?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done enough of that engineering to determine that yet, Tom. That'll be in the next, that'll be in the design.
Do we know if they're in their right-of-way so that they would have to do the moving?
Yeah, and we're, we're, that has not been determined yet. We've got to get a detailed survey so we know exactly where that section line is and where the existing right-of-way. Once we know that, then we'll be coming to you and the utility companies to determine whose responsibility it is to move those utilities. We have costs in here, just so that we're covered for. But again, if, if the county doesn't have to do that relocation cost, those would disappear as well.
So you think we are covered in your estimates in the, in the case that we did have to, we were responsible for moving the poles?
Exactly, yes. Yeah, we're, we're covered for the cost.
Yeah.
Do you have another comment or question, Tom?
Yeah, and then being incredibly cheap, you know, it takes me to get, you just jumped up to the hundred feet just like that, is that...
I'm cheap too.
I've been thinking quite a bit because I've been going to all those East Brookings, and we've got some real high-powered people in the community working for this Twentieth Street overpass. Is that, actually, I see some of the use from Twentieth Street, which is, we've got a half-mile, right? From...
Right, right.
To Twentieth, going south, that's ours. And then after that, I see the use being, and assuming eventually there's a completion of that, decrease, because they won't go down to Thirty-Second, they're going to use Twentieth, the head over. Being that, I'm just throwing out as an idea, going the hundred to Twentieth and eighty after that, just as a cost saving and long-term. It matches the rest of it, south past Elkton Road, it matches at eighty, and I just see the use being way more up to that Twentieth and then decreasing after that.
Stephanie, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, my question was, one of the outstanding questions that the board had on my list of things to be answered is the cost of those utility relocations, but he said those are included in your cost by yourself.
That's included in the cost, and, and somewhat of a rebuttal to Commissioner Weisseth is the fact that, and Dick would probably be able to correct me, but when you're, in the future, is you're going for any federal assistance, if there is, and this is considered a connector net, adequate right-of-way is important when you're going for that assistance, and a hundred is, would be the way to go.
Yeah, and I love the future, but sometimes the future can take care of itself, you know? If it becomes that important, it won't be, take much to do with that later, but...
Future acquisition, the acquisition of right-of-way is the cheapest today that it'll ever be.
Well, that's, well, that's for sure, but today's dollars are cheaper than what don't be.
Yeah. And my only comment there is if you took and changed those numbers to Twentieth and beyond, you're not going to make that big a significant change in those numbers. And, and I see that the south end of this is going to carry a lot of truck traffic coming on off of the Elkton exit, and that's where I see our issues of making sure it's wide enough, and I, that's where I still think, I mean, if we can't afford it, let's, let's back down. But I, I think, I think that's the first option that I would like to look at, and if it doesn't work out, if we, if we have to scale it down, let's do that. But I don't think we should go to the eighty and then decide later how to get it back, get it to a hundred. That's my comment.
Mr. Chair, I, I think that, I, when I went to Daryl, I, I didn't like the sixty-six or the sixty, and I, I thought the hundred was overkill. I wanted to build a good, safe road. And when we came up, we stepped it off. I mean, we about got run over a couple of times. We were out there in the middle of the road stepping it off. And when we stepped off an eighty-foot right-of-way, that gives us a nice, safe roadway, and I, I think that that is enough. And so I guess, I too am cheap, Tom, and I guess I, I think that we will, would be more than adequate with the eighty-foot right-of-way.
I think, Ryan?
Yeah, well, what, another question for you. Why, why did the, when they went north on Thirty-Fourth, why'd they go a hundred? What was there, were you, I mean, were you, you built that, you were involved in that one, correct, weren't you? What was the thought process of that?
Typical right-of-ways for secondary highways are a hundred feet. There are some that are eighty, and like I said, Thirty-Fourth, just south of Thirty-Second is, is eighty feet, based on what we stepped off. We didn't, well, we did have a tape measure after that day. It was a windy day, but typically, yeah, typically, secondary highways for federal aid are a hundred feet, and maybe Dick could confirm that too. But, but that's what we typically see.
And that was the reasoning that they, that one was built at that, there was for the federal aid potentially, or is it because of increased potential traffic, safety issues, that type of stuff? I guess just because it's a, we're going to get federal aid because a hundred, you know, is there other issues that are involved that a person would go to a hundred rather than eighty?
Well, a lot of your, a lot of your highways, county highways, are going to be in the rural area where you're, you're going to have traffic of fifty-five miles an hour, and you, you do want to try to provide as safe of a highway as you can. And the hundred-foot right-of-way, fifty feet each side of center line, does provide a good, safe highway for a higher speed traffic. Now, I don't know, you know, what speed we're going to be posting this at. You know, eventually, it'll probably be down into our urban speeds of thirty-five miles an hour, so it, it can, it can go either way, whether eighty or, or a hundred, but certainly, we've stepped away from the sixty-six, which is good. That, I felt, would, would not be a good highway that we would be constructing. The effort to get eighty feet versus a hundred feet, the effort in terms of negotiating with landowners and so forth, in terms of plating, it's not going to be any additional effort. I don't know in terms of dealing with the property owners, how much more that's going to be for an effort, you know, to get that extra ten feet on each side. That, we're not sure of yet until we really start the negotiations.
Another quick question for you, and, and maybe Bob or Dick, is there any down the road that you would envision that this would go from a, a two-lane or a three-lane to a four or five? Where like on South Main of Brookings, you know, where, where they're starting to expand, they're going to a three, that's where a school's going to be built, and all of a sudden, we're going to get down on farther south Main, down to Thirty-Fourth down there, and there's not enough right-of-way to keep that to a four or three or two. And, and my question is, okay, what if a, a school is built to the, between Aurora and Brookings? And now all of a sudden, that's a main road, and we need not just the two lanes and a turning, but we need three, or we need four or five, like we do on South Main. And I guess down the future, that's where my question comes in a little bit, is, okay, what's the expansion of Brookings County and the expansion of Brookings, and where are we going to go? That if we turn around and put an eighty-foot here, where this could be something that could turn out to be a four or five-lane road, we've kind of shot ourselves in the foot again. And now we have to go back and try to redo it, it doesn't qualify, and that type of thing there too. And I guess I'm kind of leaning towards, I guess I could let you answer the question. Do you ever envision that? I don't know if anybody can. Bob, what's your thoughts?
Right now, the long-term envision for that whole area is basically gravel pits. Especially right along Thirty-Fourth. Most of the, most of the land's owned by either a gravel company or families that's, that does gravel. Doesn't mean that there are gravel pits now, but so...
The city would annex it, they have to pay for it.
Excuse me, Tom, you asked for the floor.
Well, of course, if we save a hundred and eighty, if we get the, say, the one grant and get those poles measured correctly and get them off there, we would have the extra money. It is only, only a hundred different, a hundred thousand difference. Bobby is an auctioneer, Don, we get a volume discount if we buy more right-of-way, right? Stephanie, this is poor memory on my part, I don't have the paperwork, you can look it up right away. We just set some money aside, and we don't have, we have a rub, Nevada, minus six hundred thousand cost. What have we, what have we got, what do we have?
All my memory fits.
I know, I realize it's just ballparking, but at this point, but what can we afford as we budgeted?
Well, and I guess I think it's important to us, I mean, this is a, you know, even though, you know, the businesses out there want to partner with us, I think we could go back and say, you know, look, we, we're looking at this for this price, and we're looking at this for this price. And I'm sure, I would sure that probably the majority of them would say, we'd like to go with a hundred if we can get it. But I think maybe go back to them and just say, this is our two options, and this is additional cost. I mean, if we think all we can afford is an eighty by our money, and they want a hundred, then they're going to realize that's what the cost is. And I, I don't, I'm not expecting them to do that, but pay for that. I'm just saying, just, they need to look at the options too, of what they think the use is. And I, and I think, you know, the landfill road out there, I mean, you get two garbage trucks meeting each other, and it's just nice having that extra room, and I think, you know, you've got semis coming and going on this, and I, I'd really like to, again, look strong at the hundred, but if it doesn't happen because we can't afford it, but we don't know.
While she's looking for that, I guess the other point is that they have committed the neighbors a hundred thousand dollars, so you can say they paid for a hundred-foot right-of-way. You go from eighty to a hundred, I mean, could look at that.
Mr. Chair, and I did address this issue with the ringleader of our partners, and he said eighty-foot is fine with us.
Well, listening to the board, and I appreciate Ryan's comments, and I think there's, there's one thing that we need to understand. Yes, right along this particular road, there's probably not going to be major development for the simple reason that, of its current use, the adjacent uses. But what we're doing is we're moving traffic from one heavily populated area in our community to another area that's probably going to be a population base in the future, simply because, Ryan indicated. You go to the south and the east in that Aurora area, there could be, you know, there's already, you know, I'm hearing some shop talk about the potential of an elementary school or something, and, and there's going to be development in that area. And so that's, as I sit here and I think about this, and what's, what's going to be happening in the future with the current industries that are there, the truck traffic, and five or seven years or whatever it comes to pass, and I'm sure it will, that there will be a, a school in that eastern part of the community, i.e. Aurora or thereabouts, we're going to be transporting children with school buses and so forth, so I, I'm, I'm one of those that I think now is the time to move forward. And I think what, what we need to talk to our engineers about so that they have a sense of direction is what is, what is the general consensus of this board, so that you can move forward and start determining if you have to purchase, if we're going to purchase right-of-way or not. And, you know, I, I happen to, to agree with Commissioners Crowman and Falcon, and I think today is the day to make the move for the future, and we're, we're poised then for whatever may be coming forward, but we're certainly going to be in a position that if there are restrictions on any, any potential state, federal aids, we certainly would qualify for it if there, if there are some, so that, that's my point. But, but we need, we need to bring it to the table a little bit, give these guys a sense of direction where we're headed so that we can move forward and so on.
And there, there has been some discussion about development out there, even though that's all floodplain. There's gravel out there, and there's been discussion of mining thirty, forty acres of gravel, and then putting housing subdivision around that and, and developing around the lake in that area, using the overburden to build up out of the floodplain. So, you know, if, if I had a vision twenty-five to thirty years out, I could, I could see that area south of Twentieth Street being developed, that quarter section there, being developed into perhaps some commercial, some business, and a fair amount of probably upper-scale residential.
And, Daryl, I'm glad you brought it up because, yes, I've heard the same conversation, I just didn't want to be, be making that public comment, but...
Yeah, that's right, and they're not rumors anymore. There's been some planning done with it.
So there's, there's going to be development work out there too, so, Dennis?
Well, I think for right now, I mean, we've got our figures. We can't, we're not going to do anything today. We just got, this is an update. We've got our figures, you've got direction, that we're not going to go with the sixty-six. I mean, we just can't, that's not workable. I don't think anybody will all agree to that. Whether it's eighty or whether it's a hundred, I think our next step is to get the, get the cost for the Nevada road so we can just make, because those two tie together as far as our, what a funding ability we have.
Well, just kind of looking at three-point-two-five, and then we set aside, and then plus the million, a million that we had, of course, I just, just because we have it, I don't want to spend it, but, God, I hate to admit this, but your guys' arguments have kind of swung me over to the hundred foot because there is more immediate use. The trucks out there just scare the heck out of me. And, and it is eighty further out, but that's all the way out to Thirty-Second, so if I use my logic, as you go out, it's going to be used less. I guess we're safe with the eighty, in my mind, and, and we're talking a hundred difference, and we got a hundred from the people out there. We already can knock off a hundred and eighty if we get that grant, knock off a bunch. A hundred and ten, if we don't have to move the power poles. I guess I'm, I, I'm leaning towards getting this thing going, and rather than waiting for the Nevada, because the Nevada project's going to be, after the six hundred thousand state grants, I think it's going to be affordable.
I think, Commissioner Miller, did you, you punched your button, did you?
Yes, you know, and I'll, I'll go with the consensus of the board, you know, if, if a hundred is what they desire. But I am in agreement with Commissioner Weisseth that we need to make a decision and get this going.
That would be, that would be the chair's comment, is I think we need to send out a strong sense of direction. We need to start communicating with our other partner in this overall road project, which is the city, and start coordinating things as soon as we can so that the whole package can be done at the same time, and, and that's going to save money for both the city and the county with the joint bidding and so forth. But that's, it's going to be your folks' decision.
Well, Stephanie, what's the next legal step? I mean, as far as paying these guys and moving forward? Because I think the city's planning on us doing it this summer, so...
I think if the board's direction is that you want to proceed with the bid documents for the hundred-foot right-of-way, then they need to do their engineering works, survey work to see if those utilities are our expense or the other expense, and then communicate with the city of Brookings on when they're doing their bid project so it can all coincide. I don't know, Dick, do you see something different than that?
Okay, for the sake of time and movement, I'm going to ask each of you, if we were to proceed forward today, should we be giving them the direction to let's proceed on the, on the basis of a hundred-foot right-of-way? Okay, you have that unanimous decision by this board. I think the other direction we want you to take now is to start getting more detailed, find out about the power lines. We want to get some closer costs on acquisition of right-of-way. And also, let's, I'd like you, our board would like you to be communicating with the city so that we start pulling together for a timeline to get the project done.
Yes, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Chairman Larson, yeah, you, you took the wind out of my sail, but I...
I didn't mean to do that.
No, that's fine, I've got the next step.
Okay.
And that was determined right-of-way alternative, and what I heard was, let's start with that hundred feet. Now, if we get into some issues there, I'll have to come, we'll have to come back to the commission and talk about it. You know, maybe we don't have willing sellers, and, of course, that's where a state's attorney comes in too. So, so we'll, we'll proceed with a hundred-foot right-of-way. We'll, what we need to get to Stephanie and onto your next board is going to be, meeting is going to be an engineering services agreement. And that agreement will include the design, the right-of-way plats necessary to secure the right-of-way, and it'll also include the construction services, where we would have a person out there making sure that you're going to get what you paid for. And then, right-of-way, we'll have to start negotiating and securing right-of-way, and then the bids and the construction, and hopefully, next fall, we'll have a ribbon-breaking. But included in there, we will certainly be visiting with the city and Jeff Weldon and his people.
Right, and we're going to, you know, I want you to stay in contact with Mr. Burke, our highway superintendent, and his department, as well as with the state's attorneys, who is our legal counsel, so that we do everything correct. And I think this is going to be another example of the public-private partnerships that we've been creating in this community, and I think our, I think our private partners are going to work very well with us in this, and they know what this road means to their businesses too, and I'm, I'm hopeful that our right-of-way acquisition is going to go smooth.
I hope so, too.
Yeah. Any other questions for these gentlemen?
Yeah, just a final comment. I think with what we have set aside, we're going to be okay, and not that I want to spend it all, but I think we need to, we, it isn't like we're going to, you're going to design it, and then we're going to figure out where to get the money from. I mean, we, we do have some, some money that we have earmarked, so I feel comfortable with moving forward.
Okay, any other questions? Staff, Dick, you got any... Dick, you got any questions of them?
Yes, Dick, we'll be working with you on the right of way and which probably, you know, I take too much of your time, but how do you want to do the negotiation for the land itself? You know, we'll develop the right of way plats and the warranty deeds will probably, you know, you'll probably draw up the warranty deeds, which would be the instrument to transfer the land from private to the county.
Oftentimes in the past, our department heads have worked with the property owners in some negotiations and things like that. And I think, I think at this point, if we've got a team effort, you guys are developing the plats so we know exactly what we're talking about, and you keep Dick in the loop, you can start doing some preliminary discussions with the property owners and get some ideas of cost. And if you've got legal questions, you can visit with the state's attorney and bring it to us, and we'll report back to us and we'll discuss it.
We're on our way.
You're on your way.
We'll have an agreement to you at the next meeting. On the other hand, we have already started surveying.
Good.
Survey's done, actually. We're just waiting to get the part of the section corners.
Okay.
Set pretty good with that.
Good.
We had a little lull in time last fall, so before the snow hits, we got a fair amount of that surveying done, so.
Good.
But we don't have it down on paper, so I can't answer the question of a right of way yet. That's the part that we still have to.
You know, concerning right of ways, a lot of that land is owned by some of our partners in here. So I don't anticipate that that is going to be a real difficult thing. And I think what they were thinking when they made in-kind offerings here is the right of ways.
I think so, too.
So I'm hoping that that will not be a major issue.
Yeah, I'm hoping that that's the case, too.
Very good. Thanks, Daryl.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brad. See you guys. Look forward to hearing from you shortly.
Very good.
Okay. Excuse me. At this time, I'm going to call on a very patient Todd Case, who is another partner of ours, as we participate in the First District Association of Governments. And Todd's going to give us a report, and hopefully, those in our viewing audience will come to appreciate all of the hard efforts and work that First District does for not just Brookings County, but for the area. Todd?
Well, good morning. It's nice to see you always. It's always seems to be like this time of the year where it's really cold. And I was driving down this morning and I thought to myself, boy, it's the sixth time that I've had this opportunity to meet with you over the years as the executive director of the First Planning District in Watertown. And every year, it's kind of the same shtick, but I just want to just reiterate some of the things that we are doing here at the office on behalf of the district as a whole and Brookings County. Within your packet, I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm just going to go over briefly, because I'm sure you've had the opportunity to review it. But as many of you are aware, the First District Association of Local Governments is one of six regional planning and development districts located throughout the state. We have sister organizations based in Sioux Falls, Yankton, Aberdeen, Pure, and Rapid City. Next slide, please. We've been around since nineteen seventy-one. We're a creature of the state. Governor Frank Farrar created the planning districts back in late seventy-one and seventy-two. We serve eleven counties, seventy-five communities in northeastern South Dakota, from Roberts County down to Moody, back to Minor, and up to Clark. Next slide, please. We are governed by a governing body, which is a thirty-five-member board made up of representation from all eleven counties, plus the two tribes within our service area. Within Brookings County, Dennis is our current representative. We also have Fred Weeks, the mayor of Aurora, and our at-large member is Mike Bartley here from Brookings. The governing body, basically, their job is to approve our work plan on an annual basis, approve our budget, provide guidance to me, so that I can, in turn, can do that to the staff as well. Next slide, please. We are, our fiscal year runs from October through September. We follow the federal fiscal year, and many people ask, well, how are you funded? Well, we ask for dues from our seventy-five members in eleven counties. That makes up about twenty-three percent of our operating funds. We use those dollars to match other state and federal grants. We do some specific state contract work, which makes up the other twenty-two percent. But fifty-five percent of our operating comes in the form of fee-for-service work, which is provided to our membership at a much discounted rate than you would see on the private market because of the power of the collective with what we're receiving in dues. Next, please. Our staff, I'm twenty-one years in May, it's hard to believe that I've been here that long. And I never would have thought of it in nineteen ninety-three, at least when I started this deal. But we, I have a very seasoned staff, we have twelve individuals on staff, full-time employees with over almost a hundred and seventy years of cumulative experience in a wide variety of work areas. Next, please. As far as what we do, we are a packager of many services. We do applications for grants and loans for various infrastructure and community service projects. If you're fortunate enough to get those projects funded, then we come in and we do that red tape administration, all the I's dotting and T's crossing, do a lot of different planning. I mean, a planning district is in the name of our organization, working in zoning and comprehensive land use planning and special studies and economic development projects. Do some very specific activities within the office. Geographic information systems is a very large, integral part of who we are. We have three people, full-time staff, that works solely in GIS. And GIS is something that we do in every facet of our business. We also help with the counties and communities in establishing TIF districts. We are, our sister organization, the First District Development Company, is a SBA, Small Business Administration, five oh four, a loan center. We have over a million and a half dollars in various revolving loan funds that we make available to private businesses throughout the district. And then we're always out there schlepping the programs at the federal and state level that they have that we're involved with. Next slide, please. When it comes down to results, there, I say this all the time, there's so many ways that I think we provide results and offerings to our membership, but it really comes down to dollars and cents and what has been the return on investment. And so last year, in two thousand and thirteen, we had oh, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in dues that came into the organization. We were able to use those dues to help pay for our assistance to provide our membership in obtaining close to, oh, seven point one million dollars in grants, into federal and state grants into our area, which is about a thirty dollars and ninety-two cent return on investment. Since two thousand and eight, when I took over the helm of the office, we've been averaging about twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Over those, two thousand and eight through two thousand and thirteen, of what that twenty-five fifty-nine means on an annual, it means about thirty-two million, thirty-two point four million in grants that have come into our eleven-county area over the year since two thousand and eight. Next slide, please. In Brookings County specifically, this year, the county and its municipalities over the population of a hundred paid forty-nine thousand dollars into dues into our organization. We were able to assist in getting six hundred and close to seven thousand dollars in grants, most of that coming strictly to the county, which is a good thing, because lots of times, most of the grant work we do is in municipalities. So we were very, very happy to see a couple of grants coming into the county specifically for that Navita project. But if you break that out, over the last two thousand and eight through two thousand and thirteen, about a thirty dollar return on investment has come back into Brookings County as a whole. Just last year was a little over twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents, based upon the dues that came into the organization. The county activity sheet, please. As far as some of the different specific activities that we worked on in Brookings County over the course of the last year, Luke Muller in our office is down here at least once a month, sometimes more often, working with Bob and Megan, attending planning commission meetings. We've been assisting Bob and Megan in attending the comprehensive land use plan meetings and providing any resources that we can, answering questions whenever it comes to land use planning and zoning issues. Our GIS department manages two state databases, one for South Dakota, one called, one for the Department of Transportation. And these data sets that we maintain for the state provides information to the county if they so choose, but it also allows us to pay for staff to provide other GIS services throughout the district. We were fortunate, like I said last, a few minutes ago, about the two grants that came in. There is a typo, it says GOED agribusiness grant on your form. It's actually a Department of Transportation agribusiness grant. But Ted Hader and our office worked with the county in helping to find six hundred thousand dollars for the Navita project, which is a good thing. And also, we submitted the predisasion mitigation plan for the county in September. It has been approved by FEMA. I think we're still waiting on a couple of communities left to approve the document. And once it goes for, goes there, that project will be over. We were able to assist the county in two thousand and twelve, obtaining dollars to help pay for that project. Last year, Luke worked with the town of Aurora and developed a joint jurisdictional zoning ordinance. I don't think it's taken to the point of actually going to the county and becoming adopted, but they've looked at how they want their long-term growth patterns to occur outside their city boundaries. When it comes to Brookings, we just recently submitted a DNR, state revolving loan fund application for another drainage project. We're waiting to hear on that. We're administering the CDBG grant associated with the Boys and Girls Club that we were able to assist Brookings get, getting in two thousand and twelve. And then we continue to assist managing and administering some SRF loan projects for them. Sign EI is, we just submitted a grant loan application for them that hopefully, we should be hearing in the next few weeks on that. Always working with planning and zoning services for Aurora, Elkton White, and Brookings County as well. And then last year, we were able to attain a couple of grants that were district-wide for economic development and GIS training. And if we just divided the grants by the eleven counties, Brookings share was about seven thousand dollars. So those numbers there are just basically what I reiterated before. I always enjoy coming to Brookings and working in Brookings County, working with all the communities and your staff. Enjoy the working relationship that I personally have had for twenty-one years, working with Brookings and the support that you've always given us. And if there's anything we can do, all you have to do is ask. And I think most of you know that. I appreciate Denny comes to all of our governing board meetings. He represents Brookings County at those meetings and provides a lot of guidance for me, and I personally want to thank him for that. Any questions?
Yes, questions for Todd? You know, Todd, we look back historically and partnerships are important, but, you know, as you look back, we had a governor with a vision, and we talked a little bit about vision in our road project and what's going to happen, and see what his vision turned out to be for us. Got us to partner with all of our other counties and political subdivisions in our district, and it's really helped.
I believe so.
And a great asset.
My only comment is that if we don't receive help in Brookings County, a lot of times it's because we don't ask. If, you know, if we don't, you know, and the staff is there for us, and sometimes we just have to reach out, and I think we had that discussion. We were looking at these two grants, and right away, it came to the thought, you know, we need your help. And I think without their help, we'd have probably been struggling. And it's just too much, if you don't do it all the time, and that's what they're experts in. And for Todd, when I, when I come to the, you know, the meetings, I mean, he's, everything's all laid out. It's very easy for the board. And I think the board is more involved now than it's ever been in the past. Because I think everybody is taking it pretty serious and realizing what's out there and the need. So, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Yes, and I would like to add that. I think, you know, the grants that you got for us were, that was an outstanding move on everyone's part. And I'd really like to thank you and your staff for your assistance. And we are not grant writers. So we really appreciate what you did for us, and that really was a shot in the arm for us, to be able to go ahead and do the thirty-fourth project as well as what Navita needed from us. So I just wanted to extend our appreciation.
And just maybe one final comment. I think when we take a look at what's been happening in Brookings County just over the last five or six years, I could go back to nineteen seventy-one, but I don't want to take credit for something I didn't have anything to do with. You know, those counties that are seeing injections of federal and state capital are basically those counties that are making reinvestments into themselves. And so you have to spend a little money to get a little money. And so what we're seeing from an aggregate, that, you know, thirty dollars a dollar for the investment from all our districts, it's, some of it's getting heavily loaded in other counties and not so much in others. But it's those counties that are taking the time, those communities that are taking the time to invest in themselves and upgrade their infrastructure and making themselves ready for economic development activities. So really, Brookings County needs to be committed because I think of, I mean, from a dollar amount, I think Brookings County as a whole has received more money than any other county in the six years that I've been associated as the director, just because of your abilities and desires that wanting to improve your situation.
It's always interesting to, at the national meetings, and we have seminars and workshops on economic development, and there's counties across the nation that are our size and bigger that are just losing out on all kinds of opportunities because they say, well, we don't have grant writers. We can't afford grant writers. We don't, they're not organized like we are. And they're just falling behind. But with the organization that we've got, we're at the front, so.
Well, to continue the love fest that we're having here, but-
Thanks, thanks.
Is that, oh, I've been around it here, Todd, and I really appreciate your work and your staff that I'm very impressed. I go back to Bill Folkert's day when I worked for First Planning District, so twenty-one years, you know, big deal. But no, I'm very impressed.
It goes fast. It's gone really fast, and I'm not planning on going anywhere, and I, and most of my staff, I don't believe are planning on going anywhere. We enjoy what we do, and we start from a concept and we actually see something happening. And so that's the cool thing about this job.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Getting back to our agenda under our, thanks, Todd. Under our regular business, we would move to item K, the action to approve a revision to policy, excuse me, nine dash two dash two, the administrative guidelines. And we've got full details in our packet. I'm sure you've all read them. The chair would entertain a motion.
I moved.
Moved by Krogman, second by Falcon. Is there discussion on behalf of the board? Any additions, any information that we should have that we haven't got from staff?
I just apologize. We missed it last week when we did the rest of the annual policy revisions.
Very good. No further discussion. We're ready to vote. Please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number L is the action to approve volunteer board appointments and department liaisons for two thousand and fourteen. And I've got to try and pull up, move forward here.
Would you prefer that I bring up the two thousand and thirteen appointments or the blank two thousand and fourteen document?
Should have a double screen. We'd have them both, huh?
I know. Well, I probably, I could, actually.
Well, I guess I would suggest this. I think there's a number of commissioners that probably got some experience on a board or something, and you're somewhat familiar, and you'd probably like to stay in that for some continuity. Would it expedite if we just selected those? There are some are kind of required by the chair. If we get those out of the way and identified, and then we can move on?
And then I did note, there's only two that I had a question about whether or not they needed to continue for this year, and that would be the Master Transportation Plan Committee. I believe that that work is now done. So I don't know, Dick and Bob, if you need someone appointed to that again. The other one would be the Township Subcommittee. I don't know if you're going to continue with that in two thousand and fourteen. And then the other item that I would ask is, we would like to not do the corner appointments at this time, and we'll schedule those for January twenty-eighth, so we can have some additional time to confirm that, because those are appointed positions. We didn't have anyone run for election the last time. Those are up for election this year. So I think Marty would like some extra time to discuss with the board about how to proceed and before you make those appointments.
Okay. Okay, if we're scrolling the same, do we want to get those that the chair's obligated to first so they're out of the way? If we start at the top, we go down Transit Authority and Regional, or the, let's see, Railroad Authority, I guess we want to leave that the same?
Are you doing the chair appointments or all of them at this point?
Well, I think, I'm just looking at just the chairs.
Okay, the chair appointment, required appointments would be- Okay, the chair appointment, required appointments would be, um, the East Central Regional Communications Council Chair.
Right.
So, and then the other one would be the LEPC, I believe, Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Yep.
And Emergency Management, we've, to, as a liaison, we've typically had as a tier two since they're responsible for those other two committees.
And Tom, for our, uh, conversation about that relationship, it was, it's just easy for the emergency management individual, remember you call the chair. I mean, we have a liaison and it's, you know.
Doesn't the Housing and Redevelopment?
Yes, Housing, also, yes.
Yeah, my only point was that, uh, since we did this old plan that's before us, is that now we have a different department, you know, we have, and, uh, whether we just wanted to handle that different, or keep it separate, the planning, zoning, and, uh, emergency management, which is fine, too, I just, just, how many bosses does it take to handle Bob, that's the only thing.
A bunch.
Well, since we got the nine-one-one communications council, that just snowballs into the LEPC and into all the other emergency stuff, would be the only comment I've got on it.
Okay, so we got the mandatories taken care of. We'll just, why don't we just, uh, wanna start at the top of the list, work our way down like we've done in the past?
And that is Central Regional Communication, um, that would put Tom as the board member there, usually it's the vice.
Mm-hmm, okay. Four-H Promotion and Expansion Committee.
I'll take it again unless someone else wants to.
No, do we have, and we went down further, did I see it?
To make this clear for everybody, if you just give me one second, I might just pull up the original document, and then that way I can type them in as we go.
Okay.
And then you guys will see where we're at, would that be better?
Mm-hmm, that would.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I think Dennis and I are looking at our iPads here with the...
Yeah, we can look at our iPads with the old ones and look at the screen for the new ones.
Yeah. Good thinking there, talking.
This is the House of Board that has to be the chair of course.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have, don't, don't let me forget to give you the next meeting date for that, Don, I have that on my calendar, and it's soon.
I'm sure you will.
One we don't have on here is the Ex officio hustle board.
Oh. Wyeth, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That should be what, where we're at, right?
Okay, now, if you'll take us to the top of the list.
Okay.
The Four-H Promotion and Expansion Committee, Stephanie, you wanted to...
Yes, I'll do that again unless somebody else wants to.
Dennis?
Yep.
You've, you've got some familiarity with BETA and Transportation?
It was just my first year on there, so.
Okay, and, uh...
Yep.
The dealings that we've had, are you satisfied to stay on the Rail Authority at this point? Um, BEDC, Ryan, I don't know what's your position, are you gonna be in a leadership role there next year?
I won't be, but I'll certainly stay on there.
Okay, cause if you were gonna be in leadership, we, you could be the chamber leader and we'd assign somebody else, is what, where I was coming from.
No.
Okay, um, Extension Board, that would be hand in hand with the Promotion Board. It's kind of two boards doing the same thing, a lot of it, isn't it, or...
No.
Or similar, okay. Um, Transportation, that's...
I don't think we need that anymore, there's no reason to.
No.
Yeah, so that, okay, that can be deleted. Denny, Board of Health?
Yeah, it's fine.
You got that weekly meeting you go to?
Yeah.
Um, Contract Law Enforcement?
And that is typically whoever's the liaison for the Sheriff's Department.
And, let's see, that was you in the past, wasn't it, Denny?
That's fine, yep.
And you're satisfied with that? Okay. Um, Domestic Abuse?
I would like to keep that.
Okay. Um, Tom, the Behavioral Health Group?
Aye.
And, Tom, there's, I'm gonna visit with you, but I would like that gentleman to come to us at a meeting and give the presentation that he gave to Rotary, that was very, very informative. I, it's been a few years since I've been on that board, it was kind of enlightening, what the changes he's making down there.
I was, uh, I, I don't want to take anything away from you, as a chair there, that, you know, if you want to get back on.
No, that's fine.
No, I'll have him come, Mike Folkert.
Okay, um, Regional Communication Council?
Uh, First District, First District, that's what you need to go to.
Denny?
Yep.
You're the man that's been elected for First District.
I enjoy that, yeah.
Um, Government Affairs, um, I've had it in the past, um, it's a link to the Chamber, I, I'll gladly serve there if, okay. Um, Tom, Growth Partnership?
Yeah, I'd like to stay there.
And, and that's, the Growth Partnership is one that, that it's nice that we all got some, and you're doing a good job of reporting, that we got an idea of what's going on there so that we have some consistency, but I, I, I don't, I don't think that's one that we want to keep putting somebody new in every year, yeah. Um, Housing, that's taken care of. Uh, InterLakes?
Yep.
Ryan, you were in the past, you want to stay there?
Sure.
Okay. Um, the Joint Powers Board, uh, that's another one, I think, in my, my opinion, I like some consistency if I can, but, uh, I would ask Dennis and Ryan if they would be willing to continue serving. Is there any other commissioner that wants to be a part of that?
I will. I mean, if anybody wants, I mean, I've been on there since the beginning, so if anybody wants to...
But that does give us some consistency.
It gives us continuity, yeah.
Certainly, but if anybody feels that they want to be more involved in the operation, it's really pretty informal now, it's...
Oh, you got a couple of things coming up, though, that you're gonna discuss.
Yep, but I mean, if anybody wanted it, I would sure give it up, but I'll take it.
Well, that, well, if it's a consensus of the board, let's leave Ryan and Dennis there.
Oops.
Uh, LEPC's taken care of. Swiftel Advisory Board, I'm on it now, uh, I'm willing to continue on if they, okay. Um, Tom, Planning and Zoning, I think you're doing a good job.
Oh, I love it.
We love you.
Okay, is that all right with you, Tom?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, but I really, uh, Stephanie, if you want to step up on, like, East Central, I mean, I didn't, cause you were giving up some, I didn't know.
Nope, that's fine.
You just get in there.
Now, the Township Subcommittee, is there a need to continue that?
Well, you know, at our last meeting, though, they asked that we did continue that, but we sure didn't do much at the end of the year, I don't know, what do you think, Tom?
I just think that if an issue comes up, we can get a couple...
We can sure put it together again.
Okay, um, we'll delete that and, uh, and we'll go issue by issue, if that's... Uh, Weed Board?
I would like to keep that, I love that board.
You love the Weed Board?
I do.
Do you know one weed from the other?
Hmm?
Hey, weed's legal in Colorado.
This, this is the first year we've ever went through this, where people weren't trying to give stuff away.
I know.
This is really great, I mean, I, I think that shows that everybody's involved with their boards and enjoying them.
Yeah. Youth and Family Services Advisory Board for JDC, Denny, you've got some expertise in that, I'd like to see you stay there. And we're gonna skip Coroner, Deputy Coroner.
Board Ex officio, that's one Ryan just asked me to add on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, now, Denny and I don't have that on our screen. And, you're our man so far, are you willing to stay there, Ryan?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're skipping the Coroners, um, and we go down to WIC, Community Health. Ryan, is that, that's not too tough a one, is it? Okay. Uh, Emergency Management's taken care of.
That will be...
Equalization, we're looking at liaisons now. You, you getting along okay?
Just make, I have another problem with that.
Are you satisfied representing liaison with Finance as well? Okay. Denny, would you stay with Highway?
You guys, I don't have the other sheet in front of me, so is it Wyeth for Equalization and Finance?
Yep.
Yep. Falcon for Highway.
Yep.
Ryan with ROD, is that okay?
Falcon for Highway.
Mm-hmm, and Denny with Sheriff Detention and Contract Law, that all should stay with. I don't have any problem with State's Attorney or Veterans.
Jesus, you guys, the only one you're gonna let, let me be the liaison for is weed, that's awesome.
Well, you're kind of getting by with like last year, and then we got Tom on zoning and drainage.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything, anything else that we need to act on there? Board appointments, I think, oh, oh, Denny, if we scroll a little further, we got the blank sheet.
Yeah.
Typically, in the past, then you've just done a motion to approve the appointments, so you can do as listed on the screen, cause I've got them in front of you.
Okay, moved by Krogman, second by Wyeth, to approve the Board of Liaison and Liaison Appointments as listed, uh, please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number L is our volunteer board appointments, now, I gotta keep going here. You got it?
That was me, somebody whistling at me.
Somebody whistling at you?
Which room?
It wasn't there?
Yeah. Maybe you texted.
Okay, yeah, we took care of number L with our, with our board appointments. Moving on to item number eleven, then, we move to our Commission Assistance Brief Report.
Um, just thinking here, let me save this quick. Cause that would just not be fun, whatever. I don't have a whole lot to update you on because we just had a meeting last week, you did receive some correspondence in your packet, I will note that the VFW social for tonight has been postponed due to the cold weather. The only thing that I need to go through with you is that I got, I did have a conference call with the, um, Cheeseman Foundation yesterday, or Tiesman, Cheeseman Foundation yesterday, about what's needed in order to continue to proceed with the Four-H Summit, and the direction that I got from them, or kind of the timeline that they're looking at, is after having that summit on February tenth, then they will intend on having a completed, um, report to the Board for your March eleventh meeting, a full report on the findings and the surveys. One of the things that they need to know, we were talking yesterday about the online survey, and I need direction from the Board on, uh, what it is exactly that the Board wants to know prior to the meeting, they're gonna seek some information like demographics and kind of fi, get a feeler for how involved they currently are with Four-H and that kind of thing, um, but they really want to get, when they get to the point of the summit, they want to have that narrowed down to three or four large questions that the Board wants addressed at that summit. Um, let's see here, I have the rest written over here. Some of the items that were discussed were, um, you know, or that I've heard the Board discussing over the past, I don't know, two or three months that you've been talking about it is, you know, things like community partners, what do you want the future Four-H to look at, or do you want this to for, focus on space needs, um, but I really need direction from the Board on how you want to, um, how you guys want to direct this survey as well as the summit, what are the major topics that you guys want addressed? They'll help us in devising the questions, but we need to know the core goals that the Board has, what you want out of the summit.
Okay, um, so they, they want some general areas, and then they will refine them down, and this would be, this is for the online survey that anybody's participated in. I guess, I, I'm assuming that we'd like to know what the, what the general public wants the Four-H program to, or what they vision it to, should or could be seven, ten years down the road, I mean, that involves facilities or whatever, but, but turn it over to the Board members.
Well, a lot, a lot of thoughts, um, I don't know, I came prepared to, I didn't write them all down, I guess, is, uh, I mean, if we're structuring up and outline, outlining, I guess I'm gonna take a little work here, uh, cause I didn't come prepared.
Mm-hmm.
For that, and I'm willing to write something up and submit it, and maybe she could package it up, and step, we could package up our thoughts and send it back out, and, uh, add and delete as a communications with our assistant, or if you want to discuss it now, I, we dust off parts of my brain, I've been thinking about this thing for quite a while.
Okay, Stephanie, you had your hand there?
I think it would be helpful for me at least to get just an overall general direction as to what are, what is the Board hoping to see as a general result of the summit? Is it just to try to get people on the same page, or is it, do you want to see some kind of outcome that happens after the summit? Because if we kind of know the general direction, con, consensus of the Board, it's gonna be much easier to formulate the goals and questions that you need to ask to get to that general outcome.
Well, there's two right there, um, a couple, you, well, I guess in my mind, it was, uh, the goal would be to improve or have a, uh, the best situation with Brookings County, uh, young people, and the best Four-H possible, I mean, that's, and how do you do that? I think, um, getting everybody on the same page helps, um, what just form of structure do we want it to take? Um, so, structure, um, getting your information, all, well, number one, you got, you can't do anything without proper information and, and having that, and getting everybody on the same page, and then, um, an understanding of what all the different groups that make up Four-H and what their role is, um, and that still is maybe before coming up with structure, um, and I, I guess we can't ignore the fact that, uh, you know, what kind of Four-H do we want to have, and that leads to what kind of building or move, I mean, you're gonna move to a, a place that has shows, or has kitchens, or has everything, or what, what kind of building are we talking about? We just want offices like some? Do we just, you know, what, what will facilitate what we decide is the best, so, uh, in, in the form of, uh, structures, uh, physical structure, you have the, um, personnel structure and the makeup and how everything is, and then, you know, and then you have the physical structure to support that, just like this building.
Are we going down the line with the testimonial here? Ryan, you're next to him.
Well, you know, I guess I envisioned it as getting all the groups that are involved with Four-H and have an interest in Four-H, and, and getting them together to trade ideas, talk and, and give their points and give their views, um, you know, I, I would like to see an end thing that would come out, I would say, from the discussion, from all this stuff, this, these were the main points that came out of this discussion, and whether it's programming, whether it's a facility, whether it's the overall makeup of, of Four-H and, and whether it's the funding, you know, those types of things, I think will all get talked about in there, and that's, I want, I just want everybody to get together so everybody can hear everybody's thoughts, you know? Um, I, I don't know what the, you know, the people that are actually putting, you know, the Four-H program together, what's their, what's their main issue, and I want to hear that, and I want to see, you know, I want everybody else to hear that also saying, "This is a real concern for me, and how do we fix that?" And then maybe through the discussion, this concern can be fixed through, uh, other, help from another area.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I guess, um, I understand the questions, I like the questions portions of it, um, you know, I don't think they need to be directed or not, um, but I mean, you know, questions like facilities, what would you envision facilities for Four-H, what would you envision, um, you know, the, uh, makeup of this committee's to be, what would you envision the funding coming from, and, and what would you make up to, you know, the Board? And any of those questions, I think you're gonna get good discussion and good stuff there, um, I, I just, I'm not sure I know all... I, I just, I'm not sure I know all the right questions to, to ask at the beginning, and that's where I'd lean on them a little bit, to say, you know, they've done this before, they know good questions get good responses. And then maybe if we gave this group the, the makeup of the board, or not the makeup of the board, but makeup of the program, you know, the programming, the, the funding be there, and then they could face some questions out also to all of us, and we can look them over. But I, I wanted to fact find it, I wanted to, everybody get in the same room, let's discuss stuff, and maybe some of these things will get taken care of just by getting together.
I would just want a second, about funding, I didn't mention that. Funding's crucial, because when we talk about facilities, what's realistic? You know, build a giant building that does it all? Well, where's the money gonna come from? How far, how much funding does come from us? There's fundraising part of 4H, I mean, funding, yes, I mean, that puts the parameters on, on what you can do. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up, thanks for bringing it up, Ryan.
Mr. Chair. What, to sum up more or less, what my two fellow commissioners have already brought forth, I think we have four, four things that we can present to the Cheeseman Foundation. One being the future of 4H, two being space needs, three being communication with all entities involved, and four being funding.
I, I guess, you know, I think when you, I like the fact when they send out a survey or a questionnaire, that, you know, they'll put, you know, these programs, and, you know, you need to prioritize which are the important programs to the community, which, and, and, and not just so they can, they can rank these first, second, third. If you say this is the top priority, you, you explain why. If it's shooting sports, why is that more important than something else to, to them, to the respondent? So I think if we can get some ideas of, of what, I mean, this isn't what I want, this is what the community wants, and this is what we see, how we can achieve that, and I, I, I think those are the kind of things, and exactly what Stephanie said, is, is how we need to get around to those things that she listed as, as important, is what questions are gonna get those answers for us. I don't want to come to this roundtable or this discussion, I think every group should come, be, be prepared to represent their group and make a statement at the beginning of it, and then from there, the facilitator should take it and list, you know, what, what's needed.
Okay, well, I, you know, I'm pretty much on the same page as it concerns everybody else has, and, and I think, I think that everybody involved in this summit, I guess is what we've termed it, needs to focus, they need to focus on the future of 4H, and what they think it's gonna be in the next several years, you know, given a timeframe. And that focus should be youth, you know? Poor programming with great facilities doesn't make a program. And so the focus needs to be youth, and if they don't wanna focus on the youth first, and then build into that focus, what do we need to achieve that goal, then we really haven't accomplished a lot. So, I think that, you know, I would like to see them focus on the youth, and, and, and that's the whole reason 4H exists. And then, yes, all these other things fall into place, and so just kind of get the general feeling of the, of the public, and then I hope that people involved in the 4H program understand that they're a part of a much larger pie, meaning the community. And so, you know, if you're gonna move forward, you have to have that positive image by the rest of the community to generate the support that you, that you need to move forward, so, that would be my hope. Tom?
Dennis touched on something in the court, now, are you pretty happy with this question?
I'll summarize what I'm hearing, to see if that's a consensus.
Is the structure of the, the event itself, and these Cheeseman people are professionals, and I guess I kind of envisioned, just to throw this out, is that we would have somebody from the university, from the, that part of it, and then somebody from the marketing promotions, somebody from the extension board, somebody from the foundation, missing somebody. But maybe they would kind of kick it off to kind of, like Dennis said, they explain their role in 4H, and then maybe break it out into, you know, the general public and 4H interested parties. But I'm not the professional there, but who are we gonna invite, and what structure?
If we can hold that question, that's my next question for the board.
Yeah, I, Tom, I envisioned that we would advertise this publicly, and anybody in the community that's interested in the 4H program, I don't care if you're affiliated with the extension now or not, everybody's invited.
I just think we should have some expertise representing.
But I think Tom's going from there, is that, you know, somebody from the extension is there explaining, this is what we do in 4H, this is our responsibility, and then somebody from the promotions board is going to say, this is what we do from there. And then, Shunk is there, and she said, this is what I do, and, you know, that kind of stuff, so there's a background, it's everybody's responsibility in 4H is, and then, obviously, what we're everybody's covered with also, right? I think that's.
Yeah, we just gotta be, and Cheeseman's will take care of this, because what you just mentioned consumed the first hour and a half.
Well, hopefully not, but, I mean, I went on, I mean, how it got kind of pushed this way is I went out and talked to all the men who was in it, and it was a real education. And so, I think at least starting, having a starting point of facts and information is my thought of how to kick it off, and then, you know.
Well, I think Cheeseman hopefully can keep us down.
They know how to do that.
Facilitate down there to say, okay, this is what we have for this, so.
Steph?
I need to bring it back to the first question, then we're gonna go into the second question here, because the second part of what I need to know in order to facilitate the survey is, we were gonna make the online survey just available to the general public, and post it on our social media, send it out to our public notices, but the next thing I have to do with you is identifying those key stakeholders that we're gonna send direct communication to. But to finish the, the first topic, kind of discussion that we started here, kind of what I heard from you, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, you know, the summit, all along, has been talked about the future of 4H, how we wanna see 4H in Brookings County, and that's kind of how I've termed it to them to begin with. The focus areas that I've heard you bring up today is, I have three different lists here, sorry, programming, facilities, funding, and communication, and structure. The one question, or the one topic that I haven't heard you guys bring up, but that has been a continual discussion at these meetings, would be other community partners. You know, there's been a lot of, and this is just throwing it out there, because I don't want you to be overlooking it when it's something that you've been discussing, but there's been a lot of this discussion about the Outdoor Learning Center, the Boys and Girls Club, all these other things, I just wanna make sure that that's not something that, do you want to list other community partners or possibilities?
I think, Mr. Chair, I think those are included in our space needs discussions.
I'm not just talking about from a space needs perspective, but how it ties into programming, funding, structure, all, all of that, it could tie into it, but I, and it's not something that I care to add either way, I'm just, it's been a discussion here, and I just wanna make sure it's not being overlooked.
Well, I guess, it depends on the format, but I guess if you have your people that are 4H that we've already talked about, these partners would be invited, but I wouldn't, I mean, participate, but, jeez, I mean, anybody in the community's a partner.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Like Community Hall, or.
I think that we need to invite them, but not part of the.
What I was gonna say, then maybe this.
We'd like to have them here, in case we have questions on their program, but not part of the.
So maybe the suggestion could be that, when we now go and identify who those stakeholders are gonna be, maybe you could identify some of those other, maybe, community resources that could also get the specific invite to the survey, which might cover that topic.
It'd be nice to show up.
Well, yeah, and on there, it's gonna ask for an RSVP and give them details about the summit, but I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that was being overlooked, because it has been discussed by the board, too.
Okay.
Okay, so, I think I've got, does that sound okay for the general consensus of the topics? So the next thing would be, who, I'm running out of paper, who you guys want to identify as the key stakeholders to, to receive that specific invite? Now, I was already assuming the 4H promotion and expansion committee, the extension board, obviously, the, the county commission getting that survey directly. I'm sure Sonia could send it out to her email list that she has of everybody in 4H in Brookings County as well, but what other stakeholders do you want to ensure that they receive that survey link?
Well, I wrote a list down as we were discussing things, SDSU extension, the leaders association.
And I, I'm assuming Sonia has the leaders association on her.
She has that information. The foundation. Yeah. Sonia, obviously, and then you, I just added us and the outside partners.
Somebody from the promotions committee?
Yep, she already said that.
Oh, did?
Stephanie did.
Oh, okay, sure, okay, gotcha.
And so who is the outside sources?
I don't know, do you, do you, do we need to specifically, I don't, I don't, I think we're asking for trouble if we do that, because what if we leave somebody out that thinks that they should, I, I wouldn't, I don't know that I.
It's your guys' summit, I just wanna make sure that you need.
I guess, what I was coming up, when Tom was going, is these, these groups that right here have a direct, immediate, right now input in 4H.
Yep.
And they're doing something actively right now for 4H.
Yes.
And they're involved in the decisions, the funding, whatever they're involved in right now. The other ones are not yet, could be, but are not yet, and so, I, I guess I don't want it to be somebody that's up there making a marketing spiel or something like that, this is what you should do here, and this is why you should do it. I, I want information, facts, like you said, to go out, to let me know what, or let everybody know whose responsibility in 4H is what, and, and that's what I think should.
It might be, it might be most beneficial to some of those that we just mentioned, to be there and hear what the general public wants the program to be, rather than them explaining why we can or can't do this and that. I mean, because if you say you can't do something because of that, well, then let's change it so you can. So I, and I, I'm wondering, as I'm listening here, that should that invite come from this board? Or should it come from the Cheeseman Foundation, who is running our show? Tom?
Just the point of clarification, real quick, you mentioned survey, going to the survey, we're thinking more who we're inviting.
Um, let me clarify.
Yeah.
On the survey, that's gonna go out, it's an online survey, so Cheeseman Foundation will send it out to whoever I give them a list for, which I will go through this list that you guys just got me and get the email addresses for. On that survey, on the last page, you're gonna have the, it's gonna have the details about the summit, and it's gonna give them the opportunity to RSVP with their name and contact information, that's gonna be completely separate of the survey, so it's done anonymously.
But the survey is going to be, the general public can respond to the survey, can they not?
Right, but the reason why they wanna have an RSVP is so that we can at least get some kind of indication of how many people are coming.
That, that part I understand, but if, if somebody wants to make a comment to the survey.
Anybody can.
Anybody can, it'll be, okay.
I think though, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, we would like those groups that Stephanie Miller mentioned, those would be a separate insight.
Right.
Yes.
I would be doing that separately as well. I just wanted to make sure I had everybody that the board expected to be on that kind of key player list, so that someone's not inadvertently being left out. So they'll get the invite to the survey, and then they'll get a follow-up email from me, reminding them about the upcoming summit and that kind of stuff, too.
And hopefully Cheeseman will get ahold of those people and tell them the format, and especially if they gotta say something, you know? If they're asked to have a little five-minute description of what their role is, they should be warned.
Well, I think Cheeseman will leave that.
I think what I need to hear from you also, then, if this is, you know, that's kind of been tossed around, if the board would like at the summit, a five-minute overview from each of these players, then we will give that direction as a separate thing.
So five minutes, what do these Cheeseman professionals want to do? I think they should have a moment.
My, my next question would be, I think that that's good, I'll add that in. My next question would be, because this, this summit is gonna be taking place from probably 5:30 to 9:30, do you want me to prepare like a travel request to have some kind of refreshments available during the summit? Would that be included on the invite, because people might be coming right after work? Okay. I think I have mine.
So you have seven entities that you're going to invite, including us?
Including you, yes.
Okay.
Next item on your report.
Is the strategic plan. I did talk to them as well about the strategic planning, because they should have our final results of the summit and the follow-up questions on that by March 11th, they thought it would be advantageous to do it, your strategic planning after that date. They said after the end of February, they could make pretty much anything open for us. I did say often you guys reserve Tuesdays for board meetings, so perhaps we could do it on an afternoon session, so that you could come in for your board meeting in the morning, and stay for your strategic planning session in the afternoon. So I really just kind of need an idea from you guys as to your calendars as an afternoon Tuesday that might work.
Typically, I try and block Tuesdays off for permission business, and if the planning session was in the afternoon, and we got later in the afternoon, and we wanted to wrap up and pizza or something, you know, as we do the final wrap-up with them, that would be fine with me, if it went into the early evening.
March, you know, the next meeting, March 11th is when they'll be doing the presentation on the extension, or the 4H report. They did say they could just do that via conference call, so we're not spending the mileage for them to come out. So they could come out then either March 25th or April 8th, because then you'll have the results of that summit to consider as you're doing your planning.
Let's look at, at March 25th, you know, we, we pushed Commissioner Y-Seth and Commissioner Crowman back until they had been through one session of our budget, and, and now we've pushed them back a little further, and so I think sooner rather than later is, is good to get this going. So I, I think the 25th of March.
March 25th?
Does that work for everyone? March 25th? Yep, it's the, you have a board meeting in the morning, so that's why we could do the afternoon. And they even said they might be able to come in during the morning and do some of the work with department heads prior to the meeting with board in the afternoon, so.
Ryan, how does that look for you? Tom, that's okay with you?
Well, I teach the afternoons for maybe the spring semester, I, you know, that's the only problem, is I do teach that day. I mean, I'm just working on the syllabus, so I guess I could come up with something that day. But the only day I have off, Tuesday afternoons.
Would you like Dennis to cover for you? Would you, we could have Danny cover for you.
I'll, I'll show video.
I guess, you know, if it's the group, it's March 25th, that afternoon, I'll figure something out.
Well, if there's a major conflict for you, I mean.
Well, I'm not sure, it's gonna be every Tuesday afternoon, so.
25th doesn't look any better, or does?
None of them do, he teaches every Tuesday.
Which was the other day you had?
April 8th.
Oh, no, same, same. The only Tuesday afternoon I have off is the 11th.
If you guys would rather pick a different date than a Tuesday, that's fine, too.
March 11th?
We can't do it the 11th. You won't have your, you're just getting the results of your survey that day.
I, I think it's been easier for us to pick a Tuesday, because that's the day we've all pretty much blocked off, and I guess.
Yeah.
I think we tend to set it for the 25th and go from there.
Okay, March 25th, noon to whenever.
Yep, and I will have a professional services agreement for you for both those two events at the next meeting. In addition to the banner professional service agreement, we also got one for civil design for the Novita project, they'll be on the next meeting as well. And other than all of that, I don't have anything else to report.
That took care of you?
Yep, I'm done.
Abigail?
I just wanted to update the board on some pending civil litigation that I have going with the county, and I'm not gonna get into too much specifics, but kind of just give you an update. As Mr. Hill noted, we did have a nuisance complaint that we've been working on, and we did file criminal charges, and the issue has not been remedied, so we're gonna be bringing that individual back into court. That's something that Bob, and Megan, and myself, and Clyde all work on, so we'll kind of keep you apprised of that, but it may be something where we have to get D and R and the state involved to remedy that nuisance. Also, working with Mike, who left now, but we've got a pending hospital appeal. Whenever we deny one of the hospital welfare claims, the hospitals sometimes appeal that, and often we can get them resolved, but I've got one that I do think will end up going. But I've got one that I do think will end up going to trial. And so I'll just keep you guys updated on that. It's an older case back from 2008 that Mr. Torgood and Mr. Cradville left for me. So I will just let you know how that turns out, but progressing along with pleadings and whatnot right now. Mr. Brightman and I from the city did attend the arbitration a couple weeks ago on the joint city-county issue with the building, and we are just waiting on the results from our arbitrator as to who prevailed on that matter. So we'll just either, at the Joint Powers Board meeting or to the board, I'll let you know as soon as we have some results on that. And finally, Clyde and I were asked to speak at the SDSU Criminal Justice Club on campus, and he nominated me to go do that. So in February, I'll just go be visiting with their club informally, kind of telling them what we do, and having a chance to talk to some of the students about it. And that's it.
Okay. I'll just start down the roll. Tom?
No, nothing.
Nothing, okay. Ryan?
Nothing.
Oh, short and sweet.
The only.
I think Short and Sweet just ended. Stephanie?
The only thing I have, I only have one thing. And I had a conversation yesterday morning with a constituent who had questions and expressed his opinions and concerns regarding our, the results of our union negotiations. And I advised him that I was not at liberty to discuss details of the negotiations, because they were done in executive session, and he wanted to know who decided that. I told him that I thought it was the state that made that decision, but that I would clarify that for him. And so I had, we are bound by state statute. So, any changes to that would have to come through the legislature. So, if a constituent is unhappy about that, they would need to talk to their representative or their senator, or all, to make changes in the executive session rules. And the bottom line was that he felt that when we were spending his tax dollars, he was entitled to know the details. So, that's where it was left, and I said I would check, and I did.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing else.
Dennis?
Last, on the January 2nd, I had a 911 conference call for 911 Coordinating Committee and our RFPs for our GIS, and our next generation went out yesterday, so we should be moving forward with that project.
Okay, I guess the main meeting that I attended was the Government Affairs, and I want to remind everybody, January 22nd is Brookings Day at the Legislature. If you haven't signed up yet, we'd sure encourage you to, and some of our staff members, too. It'd be nice to, for department heads to participate in something like that. But they're working on the second bus, I believe. So it'd be a good, good group of people from Brookings going out. So get the details, Chamber Office, and encourage you to attend. We've also worked on, on, get out the vote committee. There's three of us, Perry Miller, myself, and, see, Kim, I think. Just encourage people to vote and learn about the candidates so that we have an educated voting experience for everyone. And beyond that, just interested in all the other activities that are going on and trying to support them here in the community. So that takes care of my report. There being nothing else for the good of the order, this time I, yeah, I'm more. This time, we do have a reason for executive session for personnel reasons, and so the chair would entertain a motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Miller, second by Falcon, call the roll.
Crowman?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.